Oh, we got TV time.
We got cameras.
Well, if they don't work, don't begin to excited.
The cameras work. It's not communicating with the computer.
Oh, okay. I talked to you yesterday. You all better now?
Yeah.
Can we get another channel on TV?
He's good.
How you doing? Should I go down?
See you next week. Christmas and New Year's.
Okay.
They want to make sure I said.
What are we ready?
All right, they've got the low back of himself where they're going to come to me anymore.
Again, I thought you were right. Appraising, appraising.
You can go one stairway. And then do one too. Could you then do that?
Okay, thanks.
And then send it to you later. I actually was waiting for the first of the year to come through, but they've never been. And then yeah.
This is the 400. It's printed out behind the minutes right there.
I know they were late edition, maybe.
I I looked today and I still couldn't.
Yeah, John, your minutes didn't show up on the agenda. On my agenda.
My friend.
Yeah, we have, they're in the front of you too.
I checked them all.
Okay. So you.
Do you have, are you able to get the minutes when you look at the agenda?
I was.
I got the agenda, but not the minutes.
I I put the. So I added them to the agenda link that you received, Dan.
I am what I know.
Month of.
You want some minutes?
No, I think we have them here. Yeah, we have them here.
Okay.
He's up there. Yeah.
What did you run the agenda, click the agenda?
Actually, you can have. I put it up. I think I put it up.
I don't know what my. Eaten this.
They are as cheap versus on like. Hi, how are you?
I I think we made the six foot.
I think so. You better not lean too far in, you might.
That's right.
Probably, that wouldn't have been funny, yeah. Give it those energy tires. Yeah. That's really.
I'm sorry.
Didn't make it for you. I didn't have nothing to do, I had this.
You want them far, they should go all the way down and then all the way up.
All the way down.
Yeah.
One, one, something else down.
Yeah. It does not.
I didn't need to. So you missed every month. We said. And this spring will be on this.
So that's everybody, I was still in the 2020 mindset when I did the agenda. I guess approval of minutes cannot come before the reorganization. Matt, can you hear me?
Yeah, John, I can hear you.
I'm just making sure. How are you? How are you doing? Happy New Year.
Good. Happy New Year to you too.
Thank you.
You look comfortable there.
As much as I can be.
I hear you.
Look comfortable as well.
Yeah. Much as you can be, right?
So, uh, starting off well for you?
Ah, as good as can be.
As good as we can expect, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, been out of some sporting events, so that's, that's a good thing. Kids are going, which is nice.
Yep. Keep in mind off of this, the stuff that we got to deal with.
They're represented, yes, uh, in our check, they're so ingenious. And, uh, that's. Yeah, yeah.
Why are things up?
And it's still not right yet.
We should be able to see the meeting room and the laptop is too old. It's just not working. Fortunately, we have sound and Zoom, so.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As the computer now says it's seven o'clock, I'll call this meeting. Report. I'd like to start with a pledge of the flag for those that are in. House of Commons. I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, before we get into the agenda items or items, um, just a little bit of announcement, um, at the board of supervisors reorganization meeting. We are recommendation to. Mr. Collins and Will to, or to the planning commission was approved. So welcome, you're now regular members. And they will also be putting things together to advertise for two more alternates to replace you guys. Again, before we go to approval of minutes, I would. Note that we're going to change the agenda a little bit and do the pre-organization of the planning commission first. A good reminder, if anybody has cell phones, please silence. Okay, um, what we'll do is go through the three chairs, ask for nominations, close the nominations. Hold no, and then the one. So I open the nominations for chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Jim Fuller to continue this chair.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Actually, I should mention, seconds are not required.
Oh, there.
For nominations.
Okay.
So Jim Fuller sent for president, or other nominations.
Make a motion, we close nominations.
Who's that? Right? All those in favor? Okay, then we'll call the votes. I think we can probably do a voice, but so all in favor of Mr. Fuller's in for chairman.
Aye.
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 Mr. Fullerton?
Yes.
In light of the fact that the majority of the people, I don't know what the. First dependence is, but I would recommend any motions or any votes. So the people on Zoom know who is voting, that you do a roll call vote. And I just want to make you aware that Matt Palakowski is attending via Zoom. I see that.
We got him.
We see him. So we have the full slate of seven members, seven members tonight, plus Mr. Garringer, Mr. Garringer is an alter. And you're backwards, you didn't call the roll, or you want this? I can call the roll. Okay. Mr. Garringer?
I'm not, I'm not a voting member yet.
He's an alter. Mr. Elvis?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolf?
Aye.
Mr. Better?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Byrd?
Aye.
Mr. Ward?
Aye.
And Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes seven to zero. And I'll open the nominations for vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Dwight Ward to continue as as co-chair, or as chair.
Mr. Mr. Ward for vice chairman, are there any other nominations? Hearing that, um, I'll close the nominations. Mr. Beck, would you call a roll for vice chairman for please? Yes, sir. Mr. Paul it?
Aye.
Mrs. Will?
Aye.
Better?
Aye.
Mr. Palakowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrd?
Aye.
Mr. Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. And now open the nominations for secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Ann Byrne to continue as.
Mrs. Byrne for secretary, are there any other nominations? Hearing that, now close the nominations for secretary. Mr. Beck, would you please call the roll? Elvis?
Aye.
Mrs. Will?
Aye.
Mr. Better?
Aye.
Mr. Palakowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrd?
Aye.
Mr. Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero, so the officers for. Two thousand and twenty-one will be Mr. Fullerton, chairman, Mr. Ward, vice chairman, and Mrs. Byrne as secretary. Moving on now to the approval of minutes from our December ninth meeting. Everybody has had a chance to read them, ready for motion whenever, if there are no alter, alterations or corrections.
Mr. Chairman, I think the minutes reflect our meeting only collection we have proven.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion by Mr. Ward, second of Mr. Detter, that we approve the minutes of the December ninth meeting as presented. Mr. Beck, would you please call the roll? Mr. Elvis?
Aye.
Mrs. Will?
Aye.
Mr. Detter?
Aye.
Mr. Palakowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrd?
Aye.
Mr. Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, the action item for this evening is a review of the sketch plan and preliminary plan waiver request for Homestead Village. Do we have somebody representing the applicant?
Yes, good evening, Chris Van Archik with RGS Associates. I'm joined tonight by Douglas Mottner of Homestead Village and James Tache. We appreciate the opportunity to present this application to you. Um, I guess under this format, I'll ask if there's anything that the planning commission would like to say before we get into it.
Uh, no, just, um, I, I believe this is the first time for this, although in my. Back in my memory, I thought we had a plan similar to this maybe a couple of years ago for expansions. Am I mixed up? Is this totally new?
This is a totally new application.
Okay. Then if you would, Chris, just walk us through what the plans are, scope.
My pleasure, thank you. John, are you controlling the, the video?
Yes, I am.
If you wouldn't mind going to the black and white overall campus, I think we'll start with the existing condition, get folks acclimated to where we're at on the property. And then we can move into the proposed project and then end up with how we would like to proceed and looking at the next steps in land planning. So thank you. So. Again, um, my name is Chris with RGS, we're a land planning firm, uh, in Lancaster, we're working with the applicant Homestead Village at, looking at primarily an expansion to their property. So the graphic that is on display right now, uh, is basically an existing condition plan showing the campus. To give you some context, the property that is the subject of the application is about thirty-two point seven acres. It is in the campus zone of the township. The specific project area that we'll be focused on is about twelve acres. So, uh, right now, the project area is really that kind of reverse L shape, the primary building being just east of Apostle Way and south of, um, Marietta Avenue. Uh, and then the project area specific that we were referring to, the, the twelve acres, um, is zoomed in. If Johnny wouldn't mind jumping to the next page, page two of three. So now that, that basically, whoops. So that shows now the proposed condition, the elements that are in the gray tone would be the proposed apartment buildings and proposed parking. This again is just more of a, a context plan to get you oriented to where we were at on the property. You know, to the far left of the page would be the Good Drive extension coming off of Mary Avenue, and just for context. John, if you wouldn't mind jumping back to that color rendering, we can zoom into the proposed project. Thank you. So the plan that we're looking at right now is really, again, about that twelve acre portion of the property. There is no subdivision proposed as part of this project. It is strictly land development. The colors represent in purple would be the existing, uh, I'll call it core building on the campus, operating as a continuing care retirement community. Then there are two shades of, I'll call it sand color. The lighter color is where they're proposing some light renovations. And then the darker sand color, some what I'll call heavier renovations within the existing facility. The primary reason of why we're before you tonight is the area in light blue there is the proposed project. And what that is, is an expansion of the existing, uh, again, core building. And we're proposing on the, the right of the image, which is identified as apartment A, is fifty-nine independent living units. And that would be within a five-story structure. And then as you move to the left side, uh, the lighter blue. Is, uh, again, the, an expansion of the apartment building, uh, and that's identified as apartment B. Um, and in that building, there are fifteen, uh, independent living apartment units, and that would be four stories. And then on the plan there, um, it might be kind of difficult to see with the graphic is, uh, two tones of gray in the parking areas. Really, that's just, uh, depicting the existing parking versus proposed parking. So as part of this expansion, what we're proposing is to supply in the, in the net result, one parking space per independent living apartment building. And that's through dialogue and, and discussion with the applicant in the type of use, the user that they have there and their experience on what kind of parking demand they would need, uh, for a product of this type. So in grand total, the project proposes seventy-four independent living apartment units in those two areas of blue. The project would be continued to be served, uh, as the property currently is today, by public sewer and water. Public sewer would be provided by Lassa and public, uh, water would be provided by the city of Lancaster. That's a, a very brief overview of the project. We did, again, submit the application as both a master plan, being that this is in the campus zone. So that master plan is a way to, in one document, show the existing condition on the property and then the proposed condition as part of the project and recognizing that. In the ordinance, it indicates that if in a five-year period, um, you make any changes or additional projects, that that master plan would then be updated to reflect those changes. So we see this as a living document, moving forward to document, uh, any of the changes on the campus. Along with this project, being that, again, there isn't any type of subdivision being proposed, we are not proposing any public streets. This is, uh, interior development. Uh, we are requesting, uh, a waiver of the preliminary plan process during this stage as a sketch plan. And we would see, you know, if, if successful, moving into the detailed land planning with a preliminary, uh, or final plan, um, you know, get the waiver of the preliminary plan, go right to the final plan. For land development design, where we get into the detailed engineering. We do have a letter of review from the township engineer DMA dated January eighth. We have reviewed that, uh, with Homestead Village. And I think I can touch on a few of the comments, uh, that I thought at least worth sharing. The first is under zoning, there's comment number seven, a question about the parking. And so we wanted to at least address that this evening with you, and there's a question about the, um, the quantity of parking shown. So I'm sure you're all very familiar that you, you have recently undergone a, a change with regard to the quantity of parking, and usually you're focused on a minimum. In this case, now, a lot of attention has been given to the maximum parking. So, again, we looked at what we believe would be an appropriate amount of parking for the proposed project. And the net result would be one parking space per independent living unit. And the reason behind that is, in many cases, um, there might only be one resident living in that apartment building, or if there are two residents, in many cases, they only have one car. So that's how we arrived at that quantity. So we certainly don't want to propose any more parking than necessary, but at the same time, we don't want to be short. Another item we thought would be worthwhile, uh, to point out, and I could certainly answer any questions you may have on the, the balance of the review, but, um, there was also a notation in there about. The connection of Community Way to Good Drive. And considering that and just discussing it, um, with regard to any kind of improvement or realignment out there. Um, the applicant i- is certainly interested in having that dialogue with the township as to when is appropriate, or what it would take to look at that realignment. Correct, at that location. So the intersection of Community Way and Good Drive. We know it's an area where we want to try to improve that, the safety and, and function of that intersection. So we know there are some things being considered by the township, and we just wanted to communicate that the applicant is more than happy to, you know, have that dialogue and discuss that, that potential project.
Chris, if you, um. Chris, if you don't mind, um, since we're on that topic, I can bring up a sketch of what we're proposing for, um, the way to drive, just for every. So everybody's aware of what we're, what we're.
That's great.
Okay.
Oops.
Can everybody see it?
There it is.
As Chris alluded to, um. We've gotten some, uh, from, um, Church of the Apostles and Homestead Village, uh, concerns about their residents and, and patrons. And, um, coming back to Good Drive from Community Way, especially during rush hour traffic. The traffic on Good Drive backs up and queues past Community Way. And it's becoming increasingly difficult for vehicles coming off of Community Way, uh, to get onto Good Drive because of, uh, the amount of traffic that is queuing past, uh, Community Way. So with that being said, we've asked our traffic engineer, McManus Associates, to come up with, um. A roundabout, or should I say, come up with a solution to address the, the partly traffic issues, um, that are affecting Good Drive and Community Way. What he's provided is a sketch plan for a roundabout. This is similar in design to the roundabout that was, um, installed at, uh, Running Pump Road and Noel Drive and Old Tree Drive. Um. One of the, uh. Biggest impacts is it would increase the amount of, um, queuing. For vehicles that are turning right onto Marietta from Good Drive, going straight on Good Drive, and then turning left onto Good Drive. That, according to McManus Associates, will help, um, alleviate some of the issues, um, with the traffic stacking past Community Way. We have, uh, talked with Lizard Lumber. Um, but since, uh, Chris was so kind to, uh, provide this segue, I thought it was a, a great opportunity to introduce this to the planning commission and any other, um, of the public that might be attending in person or via Zoom.
Looks good.
If, if there's any questions, I'd, I'd be happy to answer. I don't want to take away any more time from Chris. I, I appreciate him allowing me to show this and, um. Chris and Doug. And, and James, I can send this a copy to you guys if you want to take a look at it. That way you can, uh, review it and then provide Cindy and I with some comments that you may have.
Sure, absolutely, appreciate that.
Thank you.
We'll go back to your presentation, Chris, thank you.
Sure. Okay, at this point, um, the application you have before you is the master plan, where we wanted to kind of, on one document. show on this particular 32 acre parcel, the existing and the proposed condition as part of the sketch plan. With the sketch plan process as part of our application, we had the request in for the waiver of preliminary plan. So really, the purpose of our discussion with you this evening is to obtain any feedback you have. We certainly would be interested to hear what you, your thoughts are on the proposed project. We see it again as an internal expansion of the existing use on the property with independent living units. And we would be seeking your recommendation on the waiver of the preliminary plan. In the township engineer review letter, they, they do offer a recommendation that that modification be granted. And if so, we would then again, move into the more detailed land planning and engineering. And of course, after working with your group, our next stop would be the board of supervisors. So that's kind of the background on the proposal that's before you. And I will try to answer any questions that you may have. I don't know if either Doug or Jim, if you have anything to offer in addition to what I've described.
I do not. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I have something. Is my mic on? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. If you could go to sheet three, the black and white drawing of the site. And the bottom, let's say the left hand side where the improvements are. Be the southeast corner of the property. Yeah. Great. Okay, now I'm, I'm having some confusion because on the plan there's a property line that separates the 12 acres out from the 36 acres. And then if that property line's not extinguished, then we have setbacks and buffering required between the two properties. And some of it's an existing condition that I'm not sure if it received variances or approvals for. But even an upgrade or a change to it would have you go back and address why these two properties are one property. So I'm, you know, I'm wondering about that property line and what implications that's going to have on your design. And whether there's a real need to not have this as 32 acres. And, and then have all of the various coverages and design standards be applicable to the 32 acres versus just a 12 acre.
Yes, I'd be happy to address that question. When I had referenced the 12 acres, I just called that the project area. That's an area where we would propose, I'll call it any disturbance associated with the project. There's not any subdivision as part of this project. So the, the whole parent track that we're referring to is about 32.7 acres that those lot lines would not change. And the way our plan is set up, we actually laid out the parking to respect any of the associated parking setbacks from that southern property line. We have that depicted on the plan as both parking setback lines. There's a minimum building setback lines. And there's also buffer strips that are required that we have noted on the plan as well. So that would be taken into account to implement the layout.
So if there is a property line at this location, why aren't there compliance with the various setbacks and buffering between the northern track and the southern track? Are they all one property? And then what we would do is take off this property line?
Not the southern property line. No, that would remain in place. The existing condition has a drive there, but in our proposed condition, all the parking spaces would be set back according to ordinance.
Right. So the buffer planning along the property line at the southern end of this site is an encroachment into the buffer planning? Now, why don't we have a buffer between the northern property and the southern property?
As it stands. I can probably answer that just by the history. Church of the Apostles purchased this farm and then Church of the Apostles subdivided it into various parcels. And they created Homestead Village. So we've always operated as a community partnership. And we work together, even though there's a property line there. The barn is on one side of that Apostle Way Road. We leased the barn from the church. Raider Park is what most of that land is down there. And there has never been a buffer between the two organizations, their property.
Yeah. And, and while I understand what you're saying, I don't know how that relieves you from the zoning requirement. But that's probably a zoning officer issue.
Sure. And that's a good question. We can work that out with the zoning officer, I think, in other, you know, similar situations. It'd be identified as an existing non-conformity. And as long as we don't increase that non-conformity, I believe it would not require a zoning process. But great question and one that we'll take under advisement. Appreciate that.
Chris, what was the last addition? I seem to remember one again, a few years ago, we talked about the stormwater basin there or putting up the wood guard post around it. So what was involved in building when you had that project before us?
That might've been before my time. I, I don't know if Doug or Jimmy can address that.
Yes. Actually, David Miller and Associates, I think, was the land planner on that property. And that was a relatively small addition to our nursing home. We created another small household, added some common space to a wing. We also added four additional private rooms to another wing. So it was two small additions to the nursing home.
And that was what about four, five?
Twenty sixteen.
Yeah. So at that time, the plan would have been reviewed by zoning as well. I'm assuming because we were dealing with both properties at that time.
Right. Correct.
What's the height? You said this is a five story building. What's the height of the existing ones? Are they three or four stories?
They are two and three story with a pitched roof.
So this building, the, I guess the Y shape building is going to be the one that's five stories.
Correct.
John, is it possible to get the map back up the plot so we can reference it?
Oh, guys, I thought it was a.
Now we were seeing some document, some of the ordinance or something.
This technology stuff on.
There you go. How about the? So again, Chris or Jim, is it the Y shape? It's going to be five stories high?
That's correct.
And I haven't looked at it with a tape measure, but is it setback enough to have that much height from the property line?
Yes, the ordinance allows up to a 90 foot height in the campus zone. The five star, five story portion building A, the Y shape that you referred to. We have supplied as part of the application elevations that were prepared by RLPS architects. That building would be roughly 62 feet high. So about 28 feet below the maximum height. And then just for a relationship standpoint, the, the other addition, building B would be about 33 feet high.
John, maybe you know this, but I thought there'd be some some relationship between setback and height. Am I wrong? Can you build a, can you build a 60 foot building right, right at the setback line?
Not for buildings, Jimmy. Relation between the height of a building and the setback.
There's nothing that, there's nothing that limits that or creates a ratio?
No. And if, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're asking is there a correlation between or a requirement that the taller a building gets, the greater the setback gets. Am I correct?
That's essentially what I'm asking. Yes. I thought, I thought on some other plans where we had tall buildings. The part of the discussion was that this is set X feet back from the property line and therefore you're allowed to go higher.
So the, the, with what you're talking about, the only thing that I'm aware of in the zoning ordinance that would address setbacks like that is for macro cell towers.
Okay. Nevermind. Actually, I thought it was had something to do with the hospital, the campus, making campus there because of the height. But everybody says it's, it's setback more than whatever required distance was. So that's why I was asking you. And I guess I can read your orders too and see. That was my concern just close to the neighborhood to the east to have the 60 story building.
Yeah. And in that case, just provide and address that question that came up. The setback along that eastern property line is considered a rear setback. So that would be a, a minimum building setback of 75 feet. The closest that the proposed expansion comes to that existing property line is about 115 feet.
It, it's hard to see. There's no elevation shown on this map, but our property sits at least one story and possibly a story and a half below the neighborhood to the east of us. So while that is a five story building behind those houses, it sits below the, the houses that are adjacent to it.
The delta to the, the delta to the south.
Well, I'm a drawn up, I'm getting a screen share. I brought it up on Google Maps to show a, a a street view to show you, to highlight the gray change that Doug was talking about. Wow, Google. What's going on here? No, I'm moving back Jim, so I can get a better perspective. So the view right now is the drive is behind. And this is looking into Homestead Village's development. And as you can see, it's a little, it's a little difficult, but you can see that it does, the grade does decline as you move, as you move east.
I, I really don't think that's going to show us a good perspective, John, because the building is on the backside of all, all of the existing. Google's not going to show you that.
I understand, Jim, if you bear with me, I, I just wanted to give you perspective from the west view. And then I'll, I'll pull out and go back to the east view. So from the look here, you can a greater distance away from Homestead Village's complex campus, you can start to, as you move east. The change that Doug was talking about, I will, I'll pull out now and I'll switch to a new looking west. And if I'm good, I'll pull it up. So we are, we're at Jim's house.
That's three houses up from one.
Yeah, unfortunately, at a street view level, the tree cover and everything, I don't know if I'm going to be able to get a good shot.
You probably can see the Aspen houses on the east border.
Do you offer some input on that, quantifying that grade change that was referenced on the existing condition plan? That we showed the existing wing that comes off the, the core building right now along or closest to that eastern property line is about 12 feet below the, the property line at the, the residential district.
What's, what was 12 feet below, Chris? Let me get first part.
On our existing condition plan, we show the contours, the topography out there. If you follow the property line along the eastern edge of our site, exactly right along there where those residential homes are. And then work your way towards the existing building there. That existing building is down about 12 feet or so from the property line itself. And then those homes, of course, are then positioned three to four feet higher than that.
So Chris, it makes sense when you come back before the planning commission to show a, an eye level view of looking west, if you can.
Sure. Sure.
Chris, is that area where the retention pond is at currently? That you talked 12 foot down?
No, there's a, just I would call it like some conveyance there that, that's carrying stormwater, but it's not a detention facility. Not, not at least in that area where we're proposing the expansion.
The detention pond is right under the arrow, Matt.
Okay.
South, south of the roadway, west of the house.
Right. It's near the maintenance shed there, correct?
Well, well, west of there.
Okay.
Trade below that era.
There, there is a significant drop in that area.
Yep.
Oh yeah. We're talking about above the river. And speaking of stormwater or conveyance, what changes would be made to to take care of all this impervious? I think I saw something about underwater storage, underground storage.
It would be a combination. At this stage of the sketch plan, we haven't really analyzed the pre versus the post development condition, other than I can tell you that the comparison of the existing impervious coverage and then what would be the result of the proposed coverage is about a 10% spread because we are building over some existing impervious that's out there today. So again, the net result is about a 10% increase, which is still below the maximum, you know, lot coverage that's permitted in that zone. But that would be addressed, any increase in stormwater would be addressed by probably a combination of surface facilities, underground detention, and then rain gardens where possible, meeting the, the water quality requirements and/or infiltration for an NPDS permit, because this project would require an NPDS permit through the conservation district.
So Chris, for the purpose of the planning commission, this, this plan, if they can't see it, there's an arrow in certain areas of the parking lots to show a subgrade stormwater management. If you could explain what is meant by that?
Sure. I mean, I think the easiest way I've described it is kind of out of sight, out of mind versus a, say, surface detention facility. You know, we're trying to minimize the amount of disturbance on the property, have a dual use with both the parking lot and then utilize that area under a parking lot for stormwater management. So depending on the type of system we go with, it could be like an arch system or the most conventional is essentially burying pipes. And then surrounding those pipes with stone to stabilize it. But you would essentially store your volume of stormwater under the parking lot. And then it would be released at a rate that would be compliant with the stormwater ordinance. And again, we have a series of stormwater management facilities working together to control the increase in runoff.
Chris, are you, you're aware of the, the type of underground storage facilities that use, for lack of a better description, a better word, they look like milk crates that you stack.
Yes.
Um, and any, I've looked into that. And the reason I bring it up is most people in Lancaster are aware of the, the failure of a system that occurred at Tanger Outlets. aware of the, the failure of a system that occurred at, um, Tanger Outlets.
Yep.
And, uh, I bring it up because a lot of people think because of those underground systems, the stormwater goes in, infiltrates and creates sinkholes, and that's not actually what happened with that system. It was actually a, um, engineering, a design engineer and a, um, installation error, because there was too much lateral pressure coming in on the, the structures that caused them to, um, collapse. But, um, have you guys looked at using any type of, uh, anything like that? I have seen them and they do increase the capacity, the storage capacity, um, and it, they seem to work very well if you get the right type and it's installed correctly.
Yeah, and we typically try to explore various, um, products that are out there. Um, you know, the pipes again have been proven reliable, inexpensive. You get into the milk crate system as you described, it, it tends to be a lot more expensive, but you're right, your efficiency goes up with, uh, you know, the storage capacity, uh, but no, at, at that, at this stage of the game, we haven't gotten into that level of detail. The first thing we'll identify is what is that storage volume we need? And that's when we then start to look at a palette of options, uh, and see what's best for this site in terms of cost and, uh, the space available.
The other, the other thing with underground storage is, um, operations and maintenance. And, um, how would that be handled? Because you need to have, um, inspection, inspection areas, and then what would happen if the system would fail?
I mean, as typical, we'd be required to have the O and M agreement, the operation and maintenance agreement. Um, you know, the design would allow for access and observation of how the system is functioning uh, as part of annual maintenance and routine, and be, just like a surface facility would be required to, uh, be maintained and document that maintenance over time, um, cleaned out if necessary, if, if sediment accumulates in there. So the systems have ports for access again and maintenance, so, um, it'll depend on the product selected. But yes, that, that would be maintained somewhere to a surface basin.
Thank you, Chris.
Other questions or comments from the planning commission?
I, uh, I have another question. The site data on the plan indicates a proposed lot coverage of 50% and 70% being required. Is the lot coverage being calculated by the land north of the property line? Or in greater area, including the land south of this property line? And are both of those sites, north and south of the property line, under the same name, titled under the same name, or are there different corporate names? I'm still having trouble with counting the land south of the line, if the line is still there.
Uh, yeah, I can address that. With this project that's before you, we are not proposing any alterations, if at all possible, to that southern, that southern separate parcel, so that parcel will remain just as it is today. Our project area is above or north of that, of that, uh, property line. So with regard to the required lot coverage, the ordinance requires that you do, um, demonstrate the change in impervious coverage for the lot itself. So in this case, our pre-development condition for that 32-acre parcel is, uh, about 39% lot coverage, uh, impervious coverage. The, the maximum required that we could go to would be 70%. And the plan that we've been discussing this evening, uh, as proposed, would be about a, a 50% impervious coverage. And again, that's specific to the 32-acre lot.
So, for dense, for, for coverage, you're including the open land on the south side of the property line and not the north of this property line, that your, your coverage is much greater if this development area is the, the northernmost lot?
No, um, to be clear, the, the southern lot is not factored at all in any of our calculations, because it's not proposed for any kind of alteration or development.
Okay, so you have 50% coverage north of that line?
Correct.
Okay.
Chris, I just want to make a, um, minor comment. Since Dennis brought it up, he, uh, mentioned, reading off the plan, it says, um, impervious coverage required 70% max. Um, it might be better to label that, um, differently, because required seems to indicate that it has to have a 70%.
Right, yeah, maybe allowed, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, hold on, good point.
So, Chris, some of the big things, um, as far as the preliminary plan waiver, um, is this project being phased?
No, am I correct, Doug, that what we're showing would be implemented as one, one plan?
One plan.
Correct.
Um, are, are there any new roads or other, um, large, uh, public improvements being, uh, proposed as part of this project?
No, there's no subdivision proposed as part of the, the project, there are no public streets proposed, uh, and again, it would not be phased.
Thank you. Uh, what is the timeline?
Well, our hope, again, the reason we're here before you this evening, before the group, is we're, we're seeking the recommendation on the preliminary plan waiver, uh, and then we would move forward, or the board of supervisors hopefully seeking the action on the, the plan itself and the, the modification to waive the prelim step. Uh, if, if successful with those steps, we would see ourselves then moving into the land planning and the preparation of a land development plan, that would then come back to the planning commission again as a land development plan.
So, um, as far as construction, is that a 2021 project or 2022?
Well, the, the next step is we have to pre-sell about 50 to 70% of these units, so it, it's the, the sales and marketing will determine the construction start. We're hoping about a year from when we can start selling. We'll be ready to construct.
If it's any indication of the other, um, senior living projects that we have in the township, I don't think you'll have a problem.
That's the hope.
John, uh, not to rehash, uh, what we started out with, but when you talk about the grid line with Good Drive, how does that potentially tie into this plan?
I didn't mean to confuse anyone. Um, I just, it was a great segue that when Chris brought up the fact that the township was looking at improvements to the intersection of Good Drive and Community Way, I, I took that opportunity to, um, show, um, the planning commission, Chris, Doug, Jim, and everybody else on Zoom, um, the sketch plan that we have for a proposed fix for the problems that are, that have been, um, brought to our attention at Good Drive and Community Way.
That is outside the project.
There, there, it is not connected to Homestead Village's, uh, project in any, just a perfect time, um, uh, something I, I started my day out like this, I, I'm ending my day out like this, uh, it's a, um, it's a factor of, uh, opportunity, I, I didn't mean to confuse anybody.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because you asked a question about public improvements, want to make sure that we didn't tie that together. Okay, um, again, I'll ask, are there any other questions from planning? If not, then I'll, uh, entertain a motion regarding the waiver of the preliminary plan.
Mr. Gilovich, do you have, uh, uh, some, uh, question on Zoom?
Sidney?
John?
Yeah.
Is there any public comment on Zoom chats or anything?
Well, there was a, there was a question, um, Tom Bennett, um, I appreciate him joining the planning commission meeting. He asked, is there a stormwater maintenance facility of the type being proposed in use anywhere else in the township? I'm gonna ask Chris if he's aware of any project that RGS has done in the township, if they used, have used an underground, um, stormwater facility. But I am not aware of any underground stormwater, um, facilities in the township. Chris, have any of your?
Hey, John?
Yes?
This is Fran. Pack Card Industries over on Industry Drive, I have an underground facility there.
Okay.
And we did that probably five or six years ago when I was in the LA group.
Okay.
And there's a?
That's.
There, there's a number of them that I worked on just in East Townville.
Okay.
Um, for, um, Frank Maranzo and his offices on Nolt Road. He has the complex that has the apartments and a first-floor offices in the back. Under that parking lot is all underground water, stormwater.
I, I don't believe it is, I, I've.
But he told me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, because I think that was a DMA project.
Yeah, we did that plan, that does have, it does have underground storage in the parking lot that discharges out into the swale.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this, this type of management of stormwater, this is Scott Hayne, is not uncommon. And like Chris said, there's different ways to get a, uh, get to it, whether it's, it's in stone with some basic distribution piping, or some larger ABS-type piping, or there, there's a whole bunch of different ways to, to get to it. And that's something that we would look at with them while we're going through the review, through the review process.
I think I remember a project where they put it in the private street. Chairman, I forget where that was. But we didn't take the street as an educated street then. Forget where that was.
Ten times before, before I came home.
Yeah, that's 10 years ago. Yeah, that's, there's more and more of that happening, seems to work, it was just Tanger Outlets was there. Scared everybody, but.
Not that I can see, no, John, is there any comments on your side? Tom's comment wasn't out to the, everybody.
I, I see that, um. So, Tom also asked another poignant question. Um, Chris and Doug, um, he's interested with the traffic concerns that, uh, have been raised by, um, Church of the Apostles and Homestead Village, um, out of Community Way and Good Drive. What impact will the 74 additional, um, additional units create on daily trips in that area?
Sure, um, and, you know, again, at this stage in a concept or sketch plan, we haven't completely identified the, the trips, trip generation, but as part of your subdivision land development plan or ordinance during the, the prelim final plan, we would provide a traffic impact study, uh, that would, you know, meet the requirements of your ordinance, and I'll just share that. You know, typically, in a case like this, where you have restricted, um, residents here in, in the age category 55 plus for continuing to care retirement community, the trip generation is very low compared to, say, a townhome community, um, market rate apartments or single-family homes. Uh, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, in some of these apartments, you may only find one person living there, and then in a case where you have two people, they may only have one vehicle. Um, so their, their trip generation is very low compared to a typical analysis of residential development. But in any event, we would be supplying that trip generation and a traffic impact assessment or study to the township for review by staff and the engineer.
I, I would just add that the, uh, this, this project does not add very many staff. The, uh, traffic issues at Good Drive are primarily related to, uh, residents who live in our other neighborhoods, such as the Muse across from Stoffers, coming and going, the new I Associates, Shriver Pediatric, families, staff, uh, and then our staff coming and going, the, uh, the trips generated by those folks and just the, the, the dangerous nature of making a left turn there. We don't expect these apartment residents to generate very many trips at all.
That, Doug, doesn't Homestead Village offer, um, transportation to their? Their resident?
Yes.
That could, um, that could contribute to the reduction in traffic impact, Eric?
It definitely does.
Is that it for, uh, Zoom or chat comments, questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then once again, I'll be ready to take up motion for the preliminary plan waiver.
Mr. Chairman, Homestead Villages has been a very good resident in our town for quite some time. Uh, we're not taking action on the plan tonight, but I do support the waiver, the preliminary plan waiver. So I'll make a motion, we recommend approval of the preliminary plan waiver for Homestead Building, uh, expansion project, uh, subject to staff and engineer comments.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mrs. Byrne, and we recommend approval of the preliminary plan waiver request for Homestead, uh, Village. Mr. Batson, please call.
Yes, sir, Mr. Aldis.
Aye.
This is Will.
Aye.
Mr. Polakowski.
Aye.
Mr. Deeder.
Aye.
Mrs. Byrd.
Aye.
Mr. Rohr.
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton.
Aye. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, John, and, uh, looking forward to seeing your, your final plan.
Appreciate it, and, and John, just so thorough on our end, given the, the process that this was a, a sketch plan and master plan, with our next stop, I would imagine being the board of supervisors. Is there any action that would need to be taken in terms of recommendation on the master plan component, or do we handle that at the supervisors?
Well, I, I'm glad you brought that up, Chris, because I was gonna get to that. This is simply action for the, um, preliminary plan waiver. It will handle the master separately, it will have to come back to the planning commission, they, it does require a recommendation from the planning commission, the board, and then, um, it would get approved by the board. So, um, pending some comments that we heard tonight and some staff comments, um, it sounds like the master plan could be wrapped up in a couple of weeks. So, um, it'll be one of those things where that, that will come back before the planning commission, before, before, um, the final land development plan.
Okay. Okay. Appreciate the clarification.
Okay, um, moving on, um, we have, the idea of the whole business is, uh, you, planning commission bylaws.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. That was, yeah, who's that?
If I, if I may, if I may make a suggestion to the planning commission, um, I haven't received a whole lot of comments on the bylaws. Um, I would simply recommend, um, if you want to have a discussion or anything, it, it would be great feedback for staff, um, and, uh, to hear that the planning commission's thoughts are on the bylaws, that I would, I would encourage, um, after any discussion that the planning commission can consider, um, taking the next month to look at the bylaws, review them, go over them, and provide your questions, concerns and comments to staff, so we could distribute them um, to the planning commission and address them at the February meeting or, um, a subsequent meeting.
Yeah, that's not too far, four hours and a half, John, I, I don't want to go through here and, uh, man, you're every, everyone you want to go. hand you every, every one of these lines and articles.
Jim.
Yes.
I, I might have, you know, I'm the catalyst of this because I couldn't find the bylaws initially.
Okay.
And I prepared a draft of, of bylaws to give you an idea what goes in them. If, if, if there's a movement to make changes in the bylaw, I also distributed it, something with yellow out columns on it. And it's a side by side comparison. And I would suggest that if you see a benefit from what's on the draft as compared to how it's worded, the similar issue on the two thousand and ten bylaws, it, it might be worth discussing, you know, if, if at some meeting. Okay, yeah, and at some meeting, we, you know, there's, there's nothing new that we see value in adding. You know, there's, there's no more to it. But I, you know, I don't want you to go away thinking, gosh, I got to read the existing bylaws and think on my own as to what other changes it could be.
So give me a minute. This was, if you prepared this side by side, I was ready. I wasn't sure that you were staffed it. But I know that you, you went all the trouble of researching and preparing at least the right hand side of this. And I think, you know, we owe you the courtesy of reviewing it and taking into consideration. There's some things in there that I, I definitely agree should be included and you know, we'll probably be here all night and we'll get every paragraph that everybody talked about. So I, I think between what John said and what you've already done, there's an opportunity here for us and maybe as John suggested, there should be a homework assignment at first. But using the the copy we already have, and I don't know how comfortable people are using editing in Word or whatever document it is. But I know in another committee I'm on, we had, we were redoing bylaws, not bylaws, standards. And, and we did a line by marking up a column copy. And then we could see where, who made such a guess. So the next time if we get together and we don't see anything on the first three pages, then anyway, either pro or con, we don't have to spend time talking about that. So I don't know, are people comfortable? I'm looking at everybody here in the room. Is everybody comfortable doing something like that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and Matt and, yeah, Matt, this is just Matt. Matt, are you okay with doing something like that? Matt?
Yeah, sorry about that. I had unmuted. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, then, then I'd have to go back and check, but John, do you know if the document that was included with this, this night's agenda is in a form and we can edit and track edits?
Um, I had supplied, I had supplied it at previous meetings. It was, it was provided as part of the meeting. And the nice thing about Google Drive is it gives everybody the the ability to make edits on your version and then upload it back into Google Drive. So everybody can see the revisions and it tracks them. So, and I would be willing to show anybody how that would work and how you can do it. But to your point, I could send it back out as a, a separate link and, and we can, we can utilize Google Drive or Google Docs to track the changes from every planning mission number.
Yeah, I, I would defer to your, your knowledge there. I'm, I'm not very familiar with Google Docs available. So I, I don't want to get involved in that other than let you tell us what to do, John.
It's good. It's very, it's very easy. It's very user friendly. It, it's based off of a Microsoft Word. But there's just some subtle nuances that you don't even have to worry about. Automatic save stuff like that, but I, I can assure you it's very user friendly.
Okay, would, would that be something you would do individually with us if we would call you or zoom with you?
Absolutely.
How would you do that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So could I, could I ask you, John, to work that out in the next, whatever week or two or something that we could get all started?
Before, after tonight's meeting, I will send out the email with the link for everybody. And then moving, moving forward by, between now and the next meeting in February, if anybody is having some issues navigating and using Google Drive and Google Docs, please let me know. And I, I would be more than happy to work with you. Does that, does that work?
I think it will. Oh, and, and, and too. Yeah. I think it's worth pursuing, you know, Dennis did a lot of work and I certainly would just not want to slide it off to, off to the side here. So I think we ought to take that as a homework assignment to try to do something in the next two to three weeks with the latest that John could assemble and add an attention force for February. Okay. If that's all we need to do about the bylaws, John, then I guess it's time for your project report.
I'm, I'm getting a lot of noise. I don't know what's going on. It sounds like tape or, tape or something. But I'm not sure. I can't see the meeting room on the, I heard a zipper. So if there's anybody in the meeting, I would ask that if you're doing anything to you. I apologize. It's getting hard for me to hear anybody. So coming back from the holidays, you know, I just had a good conversation with Scott Hane today. And he actually commented that he thought that construction work would slow down, but it's actually the opposite. Construction work is picked up. His inspectors are busier now than they were a month, two months, three months ago. So what's occurred is a lot of the plans and projects that the planning commission has reviewed within the last six months are finally coming to construction fruition. So P O A's phase two, they're working on getting that plan recorded. But phase one is, as Dennis could probably tell everybody more than I could, is well underway and under construction. They're popping homes out, multiple homes daily. We have Penn State Hospital, that project is it, it's light speed. It's moving at light speed. I can't believe how far they've gotten in this short amount of time. They're pouring concrete for the hospital and they're already starting on the parking garage and the medical office building portion of that project. Moving to the east side of State Road, just talked to Andy Miller from War Two and Oaktree, Oaktree Development Group is, or State Road Investors are looking to record that plan within the next two, three weeks. Their final plans for the phase six, which is the enterprise project that goes to the board at next week's meeting for, for the board approval, as well as their revised preliminary plan. And moving north from that site, we have the State Road Commerce Park. The last two undeveloped lots there, lots one and three. Planning Commission in the December meeting recommended approval of those plans. I know there was some, some consternation and contention about traffic concerns and staff is working, working on that to make sure those concerns are adequately addressed. That plan goes for the board for approval next week as well. So I don't know if it was Chris or Doug Modern that brought up that, like, like the I Associates, their project. DMA did a inspection and recommended on full release of their flexibility for that project is, is complete. And that was located on Community Way. Couple other projects that are significant milestones, heat and control. That's the project that's at the corner of Noel Drive and Running Pump Road, the northeast corner. They are now beyond site work. They're doing actual, they're starting construction. Our, our building inspectors have been out there and Nissan Foods, it's probably, Nissan Foods is, he's, he was for a while out there every day. The board will be approving a financial security reduction for the Nissan Foods warehouse on Embassy Drive. Apologize, I'm, I'm trying to, I went geographically instead of chronologically. So I'm trying to figure out where, where, where I'm at on the township map. We had a couple of sketch plans there going, they went, sketch plan for the Yellow Goose project. That went to the board at the reorg meeting. That was approved along with Kellogg's waiver of land development. They are submitting the stormwater plan for Kellogg's. They actually submitted it last week.
John, John, excuse me, one second. You mentioned the Yellow Goose project. Is that the one at the Harrisburg bike in Yellow Goose or one of the others down State Road way?
No, that's the one at Yellow Goose and Harrisburg bike.
Okay, I get.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, that's pretty much the project report in a nutshell for the last month.
Okay, thank you, John. Cindy or John, is there any, anybody on chat or Zoom that has comments, residents, tenants?
No.
Okay. All right. You know?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, I sent an, I sent an email out today, this afternoon, asking the planning commission and you so you brought it up at the beginning of the meeting about the vacancies or the alternate positions. I would ask that any planning commission member that wishes to be part of the interview process, please let Cindy and I know. We're moving forward, trying to schedule the interviews before the next planning commission meeting on February tenth. We would like to know who wants to be part of those interviews and the availability for anybody wants to be part of those interviews so we can schedule them. We'd also like to know if anybody is averse to in-person meetings or Zoom meetings. Due to COVID, there's been a greater push to have more Zoom meetings. But with an, with the interviews for planning commission and zoning hearing board, you get more personal feel on it for, with a physical meeting rather than a Zoom meeting. So if, if any planning commission member could let me know within the next few days, within the next week or two, their availability, actually within the next week, their availability and if they are, if you all want to participate in the interviews.
John, do you have a, a minimum or maximum number of, of us that you would want to participate?
Well, I, I'm gonna ask Cindy for some guidance here. I believe if, if we have board members, it's if we have three board members, then we have to advertise. I don't. I think if we have a quorum of planning commission, I think we have to advertise as well, don't we, Cindy?
I don't believe you do because you're, you're interviewing applicants. It does not have to be a public.
Yeah, it works out.
The last time you, you, you had the full board here and I believe two members of the, of the supervisors.
Yeah, I don't, I think we usually only had two of the supervisors, so they didn't have to. But I, I would encourage as many of you as possible to be part of that.
And when John.
Usually meet, what, what, an hour before a meeting or a half hour, depending how many people.
I, I think John's looking at separate interviews now instead of, instead of at the next meeting.
I think he's looking at right before the next meeting.
Oh, he is.
Yes.
Okay, I took, I took it to be in the next.
Yeah, it was a little confusing.
Yeah, yeah, typically we do it before.
At this point, we have two applicants. The, the ad's been in the newspaper. So we'll go from there.
Well, okay, if that's the case, then I'm not sure why we have to tell about availability. It's, if it's before the next meeting.
That would be the intent.
I apologize. There was some confusion on my part. Internally, staff has been working on it and I was confused at how we were going to handle the, the interviews. So thank you, Cindy, for clarifying.
Okay, so the plan will be to have it before the February meeting.
Correct.
Depending on the number of applicants, a lot about fifteen, twenty minutes or
Correct.
Something like that per person.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, as many of us as possible because I think we all see different things in people and it's really helpful.
Right now with, with two or if we get a third interviewee, we would be most likely starting at six just to make sure we have plenty of, plenty of time, no more than twenty-five, thirty minutes per person. Thirty minutes would take us over. So fifteen and twenty minutes per person.
Yeah, I, I think that's been, been plenty in the past, John. Fifteen minutes and five minutes between them and so you got twenty minute period.
So we'll, we'll schedule those with, and at this point, it, it would be up to the, the people that are interested in the vacancies to see if they can make that, that date. Cindy had also thought about having some of the zoning hearing board members attend because we're looking for a vacant spot. So please be aware that we may have some zoning hearing board members attend the interviews because the people that are interested are looking to serve the township. And I, I don't think it's necessarily one or the other. They, they could do planning commission, they could do zoning hearing board. So just to give you guys, or make you aware of that.
Yep, shouldn't be a problem, John.
As long as we get the priority picks.
We have, we have not. I will work with, with Betsy and Cindy to make sure that the planning commission get those packets.
Yeah, I think usually, you know, a little before they'll send us the resumes and cover letters for them.
Yes.
So we can be.
Yeah. You know, um, I'll plan on doing it as part of, or at the same time, I send out the agenda and the Zoom link for next month's meeting.
Good.
Does anybody have anything else to talk about tonight? Okay, hearing nothing else, meeting is adjourned at eight eighteen. Hope to see you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm doing. I'm doing, I got, I had to get a COVID test yesterday, so I'll know about four to eight days of whether it comes back positive or not.
Don't count on it. Take seven days to get it back, John.
I know. My, my fiance's a nurse and by the way, gotta stress fiance because Ann said she did. She's like, congratulations for filing. Popping her up from girlfriend to fiance, I said, I thought everybody knew that because I had proposed to her back last February.